Thank you very much for being here tonight for this very important work for our great community. It been after seven o'clock on the evening of May seventeenth, we are assembled in the Denit Auditorium here in the high school. I have been informed, we have a quorum present, and accordingly, I announced that the annual meeting is now open. And as usual, if I could ask you to rise, we'll say a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There are a number of individuals who will be participating in the proceedings tonight, significantly, but who are not residents of the community. So accordingly, I'm going to ask for you to accord them the privileges of the floor for our annual meeting tonight. I'll enumerate the names now, and then we'll take a vote on whether you accept that. First of all, Steve Setti, our town administrator, Tom Daig, fire chief, Mark Giavanello, our great police chief, Stephanie Lattalian, treasurer-collector, Lenny Izzo, health agent, Lauren Goldberg, town council tonight, Pamela Smith, our interim superintendent at Hopedale Public Schools, nice to have you with us tonight, Frances Marquah is being, has a petition before the board possibly tonight, before the meeting, Attorney Brian Falk, Merrick and O'Connell, counsel for Mr. Marquah, and Mr. Paul Lawson, a Mendon resident, who has a request to speak on one of the articles that we will be dealing with. And as always, the person who has helped us out so enormously in the last few months, and has been a real great mentor to all of us, is James Mullin, our interim town clerk, and I'd like to ask you to give him a little round of applause for all the great work I usually refer to him as my distinguished colleague, but he likes that, don't you do? And then finally, I'm not getting his last name here. Oh, Mr. Ann Retmeyer is here, yeah, and she's the Blue Water Capital LLC. Welcome to you, ma'am, thank you. Okay, this evening, since we have a kind of a new cast up here, and some other opening remarks that I think would be well delivered, I'm going to ask my colleague, Tom Wesley, one of our selectmen, to come forth and make some preliminary announcements. Tom, if you could come up here.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to, before the night got going here, to thank very much for her service, Sandra Piagetti, who was the outgoing Board of Selectment chairman, and to also welcome Mr. Lou Arcudi, returning as a stentist selectman. We really appreciate that. But also to recognize the active involvement of all of our citizens in this election cycle. Over a thousand people voted in three contested elections, and I say contested only in that there were more than one people, more than one person running for the office, and I would say that the conduct of each of the elections was really much above board. It reflects very well upon this community certainly, and I welcome Lisa Pedroli as our new clerk, and again, I welcome or thank Jim for his service as interim town clerk, Lisa Alberto, and Karen Poisson as our members of the Board of Education. So with that, I just wanted to tell you how proud I was, and how exciting it was, and it was about six or seven years ago when I met Judge Larkin, holding a sign in a cold January morning for a special election. Each of us were on different sides of the aisle, so to speak, and there were just two of us out there in that cold January day, but to look out last week, and to see, I don't know, more than fifty people in this arc across the lawn of the community center in a very, very convivial atmosphere and attitude was just a real pleasure, and I wish we had a band, we could have played some music and had a wonderful evening. So with that, I think we do need to entertain the motion to extend privileges of the floor.
We now have the vote on extending the privileges of the floor. All those in favor of the names that I've enumerated, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, it is a vote. And I think with that, we can move to article number one, and Tom, I'm going to call you back up here tonight, maybe first stop reading the articles here. Basically, I think just for regularity, I'm going to have a motion to deputize Tom to do some of our readings here tonight. I think we should have a vote on that, so for Tom, seconding, backing me up a little bit tonight for various reasons, if all those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, aye. Tom, you're on, thank you.
So we're going to shake it up just a little bit tonight. You see, we have a PowerPoint presentation here, which is designed to give you a visual aid over and above the aids you have in your hand. So what you're looking at is the motion list, so that that is the page that is colored, colored what color? Is the pink, so that'll just help you, we have, when we get to some of the zoning issues, we also have some handouts, and I'll refer to those. I should point out that in this budget, we have had unanimous agreement between the three major arms of government here in the town, the Finance Committee, the Board of Education, and the Board of Selectmen, all have agreed that this is a solid budget going forward, and have all endorsed it. So I would ask you to keep that in mind as we go forward tonight. So let us act upon article number one, Mr. Arcudi.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to hear and act upon the report of the selectmen and other offices, departments, or committees of the town of Hopedale.
Any commentary?
Give me a second.
So I have a motion, do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Article number two, Mr. Setti.
I moved at the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one zero eight, to fix the annual salary and compensation for each elected town officer, and to fix the annual compensation for special-appointed officials for service in the fiscal year 2017. All is printed in a warrant under Article Two. Provided, however, that the compensation for the town clerk be increased from forty thousand per year to forty-five thousand, to allow for the office to be open on the same schedule as town hall hours.
So this article is to fix the annual compensation for elected and appointed officials, and while the actual funding takes place in the article to follow, which is here on your pink slip, number two, I'll give you just a moment to take a look at that before I call for a vote. Do I have a second to the motion? We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Article number three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town pass over this article.
So ordered.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the continued use of a revolving fund pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, for the purpose of funding the town's recycling center to include composting and yard waste and other related costs, which fund shall be credited with receipts received in connection with the collection of recycling and hazardous waste, to be expended under the authority of the Board of Health, such expenditures not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for fiscal year 2017, and to carry forward any existing monies in such fund for fiscal year
Do I have a second on the motion? Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Article number five, Mr. Swift.
By the way, nice cue cards, these are new.
Glad you liked them.
Article five, I move that the town vote to authorize the continued use of a revolving fund pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, for the purpose of funding the operating costs of the Animal Control Division of the Board of Health, which fund will be credited with receipts for the boarding of stray animals, fines for violations, and licensing animals, to be expended under the authority of the Board of Health, such expenditures not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for the fiscal year 2017, and to carry forward any existing monies in such fund for fiscal year 2017.
Do I have a second on that motion? Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nay? The ayes have it unanimously. Let the record reflect on the first four articles, that the votes were also unanimous. Article number six, Mr. Setti.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Conservation Commission to spend without further appropriation, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter one thirty-one, Section forty, certain sums as received in filing fees from prior fiscal years for the fiscal year 2017.
Do I have a second? I'm sorry? Seconded, thank you. Any discussion? The question is, how much are we carrying over? Is there an amount?
I don't know if any member of the Conservation Commission is here this evening to answer that question. It's not usually, I don't believe it's a lot of money that they carry over, but, you know, there's whatever is offset their budget costs, correct? I'll make sure in future budgets, they present that information for us.
Ms. Hopkins, you, do you have any idea what that number might be? Is there any further discussion? A move has been, a motion has been made and seconded, I'll call a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article number seven, Mr. Potty.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow in anticipation of Chapter ninety state reimbursement funds, the sum of one hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred sixty-six dollars, or such other sums as may be certified by the statute of the road paving improvement projects, and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept and expend such sums, or any other sums that is or may be provided to the town in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter ninety, or any other state or federal road programs and road repairs.
Okay, so we have the motion seconded. Thank you. Any comment, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article number eight, Mr. Arcudi.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend pursuant to Town Bylaw, Chapter 22B, the Personnel Administration Bylaw, the classification and compensation grid for all non-union town employees to be adjusted by 2% the annual salary paid to each employee as suggested by the adopted and adopted in Article 9 of the May 20, 2014 Annual Town Meeting.
Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Article number nine, Ms. Hopkins. And I should preface this by saying that you have the budget line by line on your blue piece of paper. And in order to expedite this, we will not read each line item, but we will ask for comments, or holds, rather, I should say, on any of the sections. Section 100, general government; section 200, public safety; 300, education; 400, public works; 500, human services; 600, culture and recreation; 700, debt service; 800, intergovernmental; and 900, miscellaneous. Ms. Hopkins?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote raise and appropriate $21,985, transfer from the overlay reserves, $120,000, transfer from certified free cash, $150,000, and transfer $100,000 from the unexpended portion of the appropriation made under Article 14 of the November 18, 2014 Special Town Meeting, replacement of the town hall heating and cooling system, to defray town charges for the fiscal year 2017 as set forth in the Finance Committee Budget Report. I'll now, as Tom said, read each area, and if somebody wants to put a hold and discuss something, just say so, and we'll mark it. And then when I get to the end of the reading, we'll go back. General Government, $939,487.
We have a, we have a question. We have a hold?
Oh, sure. Sorry. Sure.
Sometimes it's just easier to get approval that way.
200, Public Safety, $2,102,700.
Any holds? None seen.
300, Education, $11,428,629.
Any holds?
400, Public Works, $703,623.
Which item would you like to hold? Is it the highway, snow removal, street lighting, or cemetery? All right, we will come back to that.
Human Services, $590,89.
Any holds?
Culture, oh, sorry.
Any holds? None heard.
Culture and Recreation, $345,378.
Any holds? None heard. Oh, excuse me. Mr. Howes, which one? Parks. So noted.
Debt Service, $1,179,522.
Any holds? None heard.
Intergovernmental, $747,549.
Any holds? None hold.
Miscellaneous, $2,975,500.
No hold seen on 900. Okay. So on the highway hold, Mr. Potty, you want to address that issue? Mr. Potty, you have the floor? You have the floor?
Thank you.
And you are addressing the highway hold that you've requested under Section 800.
Last year, we came before you both the parks and the highway and asked to utilize an extra man that was-
Could I ask you to speak more directly into the microphone, please?
Okay. That was going to be utilized for highway and park services. There's about $30,455 short in that budget that we need to make up in order to get that extra person. This extra person will help out in snow removal, parks. It's got to the point that we, as a highway, cannot expend any more time than what we're doing now, and the parks have taken so much of our time that the infrastructure in town is kind of falling apart, people. And there's a lot of other things that our highway department needs to be doing. And so I, I think this extra person would be a real help to our services in town. We're not talking a whole lot of money. When you're talking 15, 16 million dollar budget, you're talking 30,000. The other part of the money is, is in the, in the parks department already.
They need a total of 45,000 and change. We are going to contribute 15,000, which will be our part-time worker money that we will not take and will contribute to this, if you will okay the money to be put into the highway budget for that worker.
For clarification, Mr. Howes, are we addressing both holds simultaneously, or do you have an additional hold?
Basically, we're at the same time.
Okay, so you each are questioning your individual budgets, parks and highway, on the same issue.
Right.
As I understand, the issue is you're looking to partially fund a headcount that highways is asking.
Correct. So we will put off 15,000 that is allocated for our part-time worker into that budget, so that the total cost that highway has to raise is 30,000.
So, Mr. Potty, how would you propose to raise that money? Is that to be redirected from your budget, or are you asking for an increase in $30,000?
No, we're asking for an increase of $30,000.
Is there further discussion? Ask the Board of Finance, perhaps, to weigh in? This was not discussed, I presume, during the budget process?
Oh, no, it was discussed.
Can I just-
No, I'm not going to do that.
Can I say a couple of things?
Yeah, sure.
One of the things that we talked about last year was, between the Finance Committee and the highway, was how this was all going to work out. We've had a situation this year that we ended up with a little extra money in our salary line, so we were able to utilize this person for the, the whole year. And it's really worked out good. One of the questions was, who was going to be his supervisor? We've, we've worked that out. We've established what that was, who that was going to be. This person would come to work with the highway, at the highway department, and all the instructions for what he has to do during the day would come through the highway superintendent, Bob DePonte. Now, most of his time is, the other thing that I guess we all have to understand is, this parks person is a person that takes care of all the school functions, sporting events, lines of fields. So for three days a week, in this, in most of the, a lot of the times, he's out there all the time for three days a week doing just those things. So we're really running short. The other two days, we're sending highway people up there, and when that happens, other things in town are not getting taken care of.
All right, I'd like to limit discussion. Is there further discussion from the floor? Okay, as I understand it, Mr. Potty, you are about to make a motion that would transfer $15,000 from parks into highway and simultaneously increase the allocation to the highway department by $30,000. Is that correct? Through taxation.
That's correct.
Would, would you care to make that motion? Oh, we still have a discussion.
Your intent is to lower the parks budget or leave part of it-
Yeah, we need to- We need to keep this public. Would you please speak?
I just want to make sure we're clear, because I know we've had this discussion at the Finance Committee meetings before we go to a vote. So are you going to remove that salary from the parks department budget and move the full-time salary into the highway budget, as opposed to part of the salary in highway and part of it in parks?
No, it's, it's going to be right into the park, the highway divide budget.
The full 45?
Not out of here, only 15,000 will come out of here.
So the, the motion then is going to be transferring from parks to highway and raise and appropriate 30,000 for a total of 45?
Correct. That's correct.
Would, would you make that motion, please? So that we have the language clear?
Sure.
I won't attribute it to you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. You sure that's what you want to do? Yeah, okay. Yes. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the main motion with regards to the highway salary line item, to increase that salary line item by $45,000, to reduce the salary line item in the parks budget by $15,000, by transferring that $15,000. Sorry, let me read that again. I can do it. So I'm going to amend that emotion. If, the first part of the motion is going to be transferring $15,000 from the parks line item into, from the parks salary line item into the highway salary line item, raise and appropriate $30,000 for highway salaries. Sorry? Yep.
So raise and appropriate 30,000 additional. Do I have a second on that motion? Do I have any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to know the Finance Committee's report.
Come forward, please, sir.
Brian Burke, Aitman Street. I'd like to know the Finance Committee's recommendation. Is this 30,000 will add to the budget or is it slower to the budget, or are we saying within the budget?
So the $30,000 that would be voted on for raising and appropriating would increase the tax levy by $30,000. The transfer from one department to another, which is the 15,000, does not affect the bottom line of the budget. And, and for some backstory, the, the parks department and the highway department have been discussing this for several, probably two fiscal years now, and going back and forth on, on what it means for the town and what it means for us fiscally. And given the constraints of our budget, what we felt was appropriate in terms of a bottom line levy for the taxpayers to vote on, and, you know, we made, we made decisions in every department regarding headcount salaries, level of salaries, expenses, operating expenses. This was one of the areas we decided not to support, to present to town meeting a tax levy as, as was written to you of about 4%.
Any further discussion? Well, I'm going to call the motion then. The motion as amended, which would raise- Just the amendment, to raise $30,000 through additional revenues and to transfer 15,000 from parks into highway. That's the motion on the floor. It's been seconded. It's been discussed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? It appears the ayes have it. Okay, so-
Were there any other holds?
There are two holds placed, and these both would erase both of those holds, is that correct? Mr. Howes? You, you, your hold is taken care of? Okay, so all holds have been taken care of, so now the motion would be this main motion here, except this number now is added to another 30,000. So that's 21,010,000, and help me out here.
21,039,985 would be the total budget for raise and appropriate after the amendment.
Okay. Do we have a second? Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? Please indicate your vote by saying, in favor of a, favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Article number 10, Mr. Warren.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the water department budget to be funded by offset receipts as follows. Salaries, $247,876. Expenses, $504,467. And long-term debt, $418,651.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And Article number 11, Mr. Warren.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the sewer department budget to be funded by offset receipts as follows. Salaries, $303,584. And sewer debt, $335,741.
Do I have a second? I do. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Setti. Oh, Lou, I'm sorry. Arkuti.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the ambulance department budget to be funded through offset receipts as follows. Salaries, $32,000. And expenses, $8,000.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Article 13, Mr. Arkuti.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote the sum of $1,584 to pay for the town's annual assessment of costs and expenses of the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission District. Okay. The funding sources will be to raise and appropriate the $1,584?
Do I have a second? I do. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Article 14, Mr. Setti.
I move that the town votes to vote the sum of $259,342 for the town's net operating and capital assessment for the Blackstone Valley Regional School, School District, the district for fiscal year commencing on July 1, 2016.
Do I have a second?
Again, to raise and appropriate that sum, I'm sorry.
Raise and appropriate. Second? Do I have any discussion? Yes. I'm sorry, I could not hear the question. Is this an increase over last year? Dr. Fitzpatrick is, he's looking.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dr. Michael Fitzpatrick, who has been tenet for the past 23 years at Blackstone Valley Tech. It is an increase of $35,985 in the previous year, significantly driven by an increase in students, of three additional students, and the state's calculation of the new minimum obligation of the Town of Hopedale. I trust that that responds to the question, Mr. Moderator.
Ma'am, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, then, of the budget, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Article 15. Pam? Mrs. Smith?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the use of a revolving fund pursuant-
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the use of a revolving fund pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, for the purpose of funding a school bus transportation account and other related costs, which funds shall be credited with receipts from the school department's transportation fee to be expended under the authority of the school committee, such expenditures not to exceed one-hundred thousand dollars for the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, and to carry forward any existing monies in such fund for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen.
Do I have a second? Seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Article sixteen, Scazavas?
I move that town vote to increase the availability of the tax exemptions to senior citizens owing real property pursuant to Mass. General Law. Oh, I'm sorry. I move the town vote to increase the availability of tax exemptions to senior citizens owing real property pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one C, as authorized under Section fifty-one of Chapter one-eighty-four of the Acts of two thousand and two of the General Court by approving an increase in the value of tax exemptions from seven-hundred-one dollars and fifty-eight cents to seven-hundred-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously.
Article seventeen, I move the Town of Hopedale vote to increase the availability of the tax exemptions to surviving spouse, minor child, elderly person owing real property pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause seventeen D, by approving an increase in the value of the tax exemption from two-hundred-thirty-five dollars and thirty-five cents to two-hundred-thirty-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article eighteen, Mr. Keys.
Before we start this, I would entertain a motion to take a ballot vote on this question. If someone would make that motion. So move second, it's seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, Article eighteen, I move that the town vote to amend the Hopedale zoning bylaws as follows. Amend Section three point one, types of districts, by adding below the words, groundwater protection, the words adult use overlay. Add a new Section seventeen A, adult use overlay district, as set forth in the warrant and in the handout entitled Article eighteen.
Do I have a second? Motion's been seconded, any discussion?
Sure. So this has been in front of the town a couple of times, sir. What we're proposing is an adult overlay district and it. We do have a map, sir, Mr. Moderator, do we have a map on one of the slides?
We do, we do.
It'll better explain it.
It's on the back of your page, your white page.
It's also on the back of the pamphlet. So, basically what we're proposing, sir, is in the event that someone, a proprietor would want to come into town and open an establishment, there's many kinds that fall under the category of adult entertainment. Right now, without this overlay district, these proprietors would be able to petition to open up in any commercially zoned district or parcel. As you can see from the last town meetings, we've been expanding the commercial zoned property in town. Personally, we want to continue expanding the commercial property in town. This is to increase commercial tax revenue that ultimately helps out the town. So the total amount of parcels, total amount of opportunity for these businesses to open is going to grow over time. If we are successful in establishing this district, this overlay district, this would limit these proprietors to petition, to open these businesses just in this petitioned area. So they wouldn't be able to go to other parts of town that are currently zoned commercial. So that basically protects the town in many ways in regards to the opportunity for these establishments to open in, in any parts of town. That's, that's, that's the main. No, there's nothing in front of my board, there's, I don't believe there's in front of, in front of anything at the moment. Again, this is a proactive protection, you've seen this across the state. You know, there was a Supreme Court ruling which, you know, basically says that these proprietors who have interest in doing this have a lot of protection now. And, and we cannot limit them in their ability to pursue, you know, those business opportunities. What we can do by doing this is to limit where they go. By doing nothing, it opens them up to go to anywhere in town.
I wonder if I'm going to interrupt now?
And I, and I can't stop them.
I might ask our Town Councilman, Mr. Goldberg, to just give us a brief constitutional tutorial on this issue. There's no such thing as a brief constitutional tutorial, but if he could do that, we'd appreciate it.
Mr. Moderator, through you. In short, these businesses, like any other businesses, have the right to open in areas that are zoned appropriately for those activities. And the fact that, that their choice of, of, of business is, is protected under the Constitution with respect to, I'm sorry, their choice of, of business is protected so that you can't say, no, we don't like this business as compared to a different business. What this would allow the town to do is to locate these types of businesses in one place. The underlying zoning of the particular parcels doesn't change, it's simply an overlay district. So that in terms of, right now, a business, an adult entertainment business could come into any commercially zoned property in town. But if you have an adult overlay district, it could only go into that particular area. And as, as Mr. Keys pointed out, without, without a bylaw of this sort, it really is open to essentially whatever the most attractive option is. And to the extent that the zoning overlay district is enacted, it, it, as I said, it doesn't affect the underlying zoning. So any person that currently owns property in that district is unaffected by that unless and until they go to sell their property. And at that point, there would be a potential change. But nothing would happen to the, you know, to the, to the way that the underlying property is zoned, and they can continue as is.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg, yes.
So this has been an issue that's been in front of the planning boards far before mine, okay? It's been in front of my board for approximately three years now. We did have this as an article at a past town meeting, and it was voted down. We've come back because, you know, quite honestly, myself and my board feels the importance of it, to bring it back up again. A couple of things in regards to, to this particular proposal. First of all, I want to say that I, I empathize greatly for the residents that are impacted by the proposal. Okay, I'm not oblivious to the impact of it or what it, their perception of the district that's being proposed. Why it's being proposed where it is is because it creates a situation where it impacts the least amount of residents in town. I'm not saying that it doesn't impact anyone, I acknowledge that. But it impacts the least amount of residents in town, and that's why the proposal the last time around is the same one as this time around. We've looked at several other locations, the, the town's not that big. There's only so many places that it can go if we're going to make this kind of proposal. We've looked at this for two and a half years extensively. We've had owners of property come to our board, offering the option to look at it. But because of the implications and because of the things that surround those properties, it impacts too many people. And there's also other types of things like schools that I feel wouldn't be appropriate to put this district next to. So I just wanted to give you a little additional history on that, because I think it's important. One other thing to point out, and again, you can reference the map. I would probably feel a little differently if we were proposing a district, and, and the, the total acreage of this overlay district is about eighteen to nineteen acres, just so you know. If we were proposing this on an empty lot of eighteen to nineteen acres today, and this was directly across the street from the, the residents that are being impacted by this proposal, I would probably feel differently about it, because they ultimately wouldn't be able to control the opportunity for these proprietors to open up something right away. But the fact of the matter is, this overlay district currently sits over these owned properties. So really, in theory, the only way that this adult entertainment opportunity could be developed is if these residents were to sell. So at the town hearing, the last time around, and the current time around, there's been a lot of discussion around the integrity of their land, and it's something that I completely agree with. But the integrity of the land only stays intact if, if, if they truly believe that and they don't sell. So if they sell, it's the only opportunity for adult entertainment to come to Hopedale. So I just want to make that clear. So I welcome anyone's questions, I think there was a question in the back.
Mr. Costanza, do you have a question?
Please, ma'am.
Ms. Costanza?
Great question, thanks for bringing that up.
Please repeat the question, would you?
So the, the question is, was, was, was the Board of Selectmen recently petitioned by the residents that are impacted by this proposal to have their parcels rezoned from what it is today, which is light industrial, to residential zoning? That letter was received, it was passed on to the planning board. To give you an update, I have been in motion to gather the, the appropriate communication that's necessary to hold a town hearing for that. That town hearing, I'm hoping, will be the first Wednesday in July, and I don't offhand know what that exact date is. But that will be at our July planning board meeting, we will have that public hearing. We will hear support or opposition to that proposal. And, and then vote for, vote on it. And if the voting for that rezoning from light industrial to residential on those properties happens, then it will go to town vote at the next town meeting. So we, we absolutely will have a public hearing on that and entertain that. So it was not denied based on your comment? I don't understand the question, ma'am, I'm sorry.
The question is, why is that issue not being resolved?
Oh, that, that letter was recently submitted, and as far as the time it takes to have a public hearing and to submit the article on the warrant, there just wasn't enough time to do that for this town meeting. Well, again, I'll, I'll stress the importance of the proposal and what I think as chairman of the planning board and, and the fellow members of my planning board that voted unanimously for this. We feel it's important to, to have voted bond by the residents tonight and hopefully pass, to be honest with you. What I'll say to that is, whether the parcels are changed from light industrial to residential zoning, it doesn't impact the adult overlay zone. So hypothetically, if these properties were already zoned residential, we would still be entertaining the overlay district on these parcels. Yes, sir, in the back.
David Taggman, ten forty-four minutes. I have a question and comment. Question relates to language in the Cyrus section of the article.
Sir, I'm afraid that we just can't hear you, would you please come forward, I hate to, hate to interrupt you, but it's a very important issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, the question I have is simply this, that, and we're all in favor, I've got to believe, in having an adult overlay district. But with respect to the, the article itself, the article says minimizing the negative effects of certain adult uses as defined and designated herein, meaning in the article. Am I wrong, I don't find adult uses defined and designated?
So you, you want to know what the adult uses are?
Well, in the first instance, the article calls for it to be defined and designated, and at the moment, it does not. And secondly, maybe town council can elaborate on it. It would seem to me strictly as a matter of putting people on notice. Businesspeople who want to have an adult use, they should know what an adult use is that would be allowed and not allowed. My comment. If we are to regulate as much as possible adult uses in the event that this article gets passed, whenever it gets passed, should it not also provide that any adult use would be subject to the issuance of a special permit?
Please. So a couple of things, one, and thank you, sir, for the comments and the question, please. In a situation where, the, again, we have to kind of play out a hypothetical here, right? So the adult entertainment zone is voted on, approved, and instituted, so it's in effect. The business that wants to open, or petition to, to open in this district, they have to be compliant with any other business that opens up in town. So as far as structure goes, as far as signage, lighting, what have you, all of that has to be compliant with, with anyone open up, anyone opening up any other kind of business. So I, I want to be clear in that, just because it's an adult establishment doesn't mean they have a special set of rules in regards to what their business or their property will look like. As, as, as far as the explanation of adult use, I'll, I'll call on town council in regards to how that has to be defined or not, or how that's defined across other municipalities. But I, I mean, we've, we've had communication out there in regards to examples of what falls under the category of adult use. And, I mean, the, the list of it is, is lengthy. But it's all legal use in regards to, you know, the, the type of business that they can pursue. But again, they have to go through the same process as far as, you know, site development and zoning, et cetera. So I don't want anyone to have the impression that they have a special set of rules.
Mr. Costanza? We have to come down here, I'm sure, we just can't hear you, sir. Please wait till you get to the microphone, if you would.
I want to get clarification, why you're even up here? Is the only reason you're up here bringing this forward before us because of the court system and what the court system has decided, and you're trying to protect the Town of Hopedale?
Yes.
That's what I understood, thank you.
Again, this is, this is a proposal of, of proactive protection. Whether it be a year from now, five years from now, twenty years from now. I, I, other towns are doing this. We've seen the impact of other towns not doing this. I think we're trying to protect and, and, and set something up that impacts, again, the least amount of residents. Okay, the least amount of residents. If we do nothing, this is going to impact more residents that are, than, than are petitioning against it this evening. I, I will guarantee. If we do nothing, this is going to impact more residents than are petitioning against it this evening. I will guarantee you that.
We have further discussion?
And then I'll get to you, sir. You have to come down here, sir. Sorry. Out of respect for everybody else. To the microphone, if you would.
You mentioned there's activities going on and hearings by people to rezone that land residential?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If that is rezone residential, and you have an adult entertainment overlay over residential land, doesn't that negate, because the business wouldn't be allowed in a residential area?
I'll respond to that. Thank you. That's a good question. Thank you. This would be my interpretation of it, and I welcome Town Council. It does not negate the district overlay. So, if the residents of those parcels would like to have their properties rezoned out of light industrial to residential, there's a process for that, just like anything else. Again, we're going to have that town hearing, I'm hoping, the first meeting, the first Wednesday in July, to hear them out and vote accordingly. Again, to play out a hypothetical for you, because I think that's the root of your question. Let's say that they do get rezoned residential. It does not negate a successful vote this evening, so that overlay district would stay intact. Playing the hypothetical out a little further, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but if a resident were to sell, or multiple residents in that overlay district were to sell their residential property, and creates enough space for adult entertainment to then be developed there, that property, or those properties, because I think it would take more than one, to be honest with you, would have to then be rezoned commercial for them to then kick off a project to open up an adult business. So, again, the residential rezoning does not negate the overlay district. The sale of that property would then open up parcels within the overlay district to be developed. But to open a business, the property would then, or properties would have to then be rezoned commercial to do so. These proprietors that are in this line of work, I can't stop them. They're protected all the way up through the Supreme Court. I want to make that clear. So, that's what we're facing. This is the root of why we're creating some proactive protection this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Keys. I believe you have one more question. Sir. And final question, I would like to, there will be another one.
Did you have a question? Go ahead, sir. That's a good question. It came up at the hearing, actually, so thank you.
Please repeat the question.
You do not need a liquor license to open up an adult entertainment establishment. Of course. Yeah. That proprietor would have to go through the process, and I don't know what the rules or regulations or laws on it in regards to attaining a liquor license. All I can tell you is, those proprietors can petition to open up in any commercially zoned district. Hartford Ave. is now available to them. Route sixteen is now available to them. These did not exist a couple of years ago. My board will continue to look at places in town to expand the commercial zoning in town. We desperately need additional commercial tax revenue, and that's the only way to do it. So, as those additional parcels or segments of town get commercially zoned, based on the approval of you folks in town, those proprietors then have more options.
Mr. Arkuti, you want to address?
The question I have for Council is, there would be a lot of other laws that would kick in, as far as compliance laws like occupancy, fire code, the amount of time we would allow the uses of the property, so, you know, if we wanted to schedule it from up until nine o'clock at night. So, there's a whole bunch of ways of using our current laws, in our current zoning laws, as far as limiting the use of the property and how it would be used, time, hours, lighting, things like that, as you said.
In the overlay district, or just anywhere in town?
Anywhere in town.
Yeah, anywhere in town. You know, I think the problem is, there's too many places for it to go now, and there's going to be additional places for it to go as we continue to seek opportunity to rezone. As Mr. Arkuti states, I mean, if you limit it to a particular district, and one thing that I didn't bring up that I think is important, and this is something that, again, these proprietors are protected up through the Supreme Court, is you have to give opportunity, and you have to give enough land that can be developed within the district for them to entertain and operate. So, I can't look at places in town that have sixteen acres of open land, but fourteen of it is wetland. It can't be developed. That's against the law. Okay? Now, it's against the law. So, part of the reasoning in looking at this part of town is the eighteen-plus acres that's being proposed meets the requirement under the Supreme Court ruling, and it gives, you know, enough of a district that can be developed in the event that someone were to purchase the properties from the residents and want to pursue those interests. Sir, would you please come forward, identify yourself, and you are not a resident. Am I correct? But we've been extended... That's correct, but you've been extended, courtesy of the town. Please speak directly into the mic.
Mr. Moderator, thank you for the opportunity again this year to address town meeting on behalf of the residents of North Hopedale. I am Paul Lawson, owner of Apostle number two-dash-ten on Route one forty. I grew up in two of the homes, historically restored one of them, and had the privilege of serving on the water and sewer board for nine years during the period the wastewater treatment facility was designed and built. My wife and I were selectmen during the town centennial. We would like to think we have been of some service, even some betterment, to Hopedale. I am no stranger to the workings of town boards. We made some hard decisions, but none that had such an uneven consequence for town residents as this one. While I now live in Franklin, my brother Russell and I have deep roots here, tracing back over a century. We hope you find the next nine minutes informative. We will cover a lot of ground. Just so everyone is clear, where and what are the five parcels that comprise this proposed overlay district? If one is traveling towards Upton on Route one forty, immediately upon passing into Hopedale across the Mill River, my unbuildable triangular parcel is on your left, starting at the West Street sign. Immediately behind that is three sixty-six West Street, my former eighteen-twenty home, now owned and made quite splendid by Melissa Murconn and Michelle Smith. Just beyond that is three sixty-eight West Street, my parents' former eighteen-sixty-five home, and its farm buildings, now owned by Russell. Then you're in Upton. On your right, along the shore of Mill Pond is three sixty-three West Street, Dawn and Lael Halpin's eighteen-oh-six home, in which many Soylent citizens have been raised. Three seventy-three to three eighty-three Restaurant is the new Solaray, then Upton. Only Russell's parcel holds any land, a couple of acres that could be developed, without knocking something down. Our quest is partly a save-the-neighborhood one, but also something bigger. American democracy has always been a balance between rule by the majority and protection of the rights of the individuals, including property. We hope that after hearing our message, you will agree that this proposal violates that balance. At the Planning Board open hearing, the chairman reemphasized this proposal is good for the town. We contend that it's good for the town only if the town is defined as not including North Hopedale's homeowners. Approving this article is definitely not a victimless act. It creates two classes of citizens, protected and unprotected. The chairman was kind enough to forward me the memo to the Planning Board that started this whole chain of events. It is dated January thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, written and signed by Gene Phillips, town coordinator at that time, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. It reads, "I have been asked by the Hopedale Board of Selectmen to request that your board begin work to prepare changes, additions to our zoning bylaws to facilitate an adult entertainment zone within the town, along with whatever additional changes, additions may be necessary to protect the citizens of Hopedale. As you know, without this protection, this type of business activity could locate anywhere in the town currently, and would likely be impossible to deny the business necessary licenses without violating its rights. With the zone specifically set aside for adult entertainment, along with the necessary bylaws to control it, the citizens of the town can comfortably know that there will not be undesirable activity where it doesn't belong." As you can hear, it starts with, "to protect the citizens of Hopedale," and ends with, "the citizens of the town can comfortably know there will not be undesirable activity where it doesn't belong." There is no mention of where such activity does belong, so we do not know what their thoughts on that may have been. However, we do hope, and is a reasonable assumption, that they were endeavoring to protect all citizens of Hopedale. From the proposal in front of us, we can only conclude that the Planning Board and Town Council has deemed that not all citizens deserve nor need to be protected. We think this is a slippery slope. It appears that the only goal, and the only one stated publicly by Town Council at that time, in April's open meeting, is to make it as least likely as possible that an adult entertainment business could ever locate in Hopedale. This proposal certainly accomplishes that, but at what cost? Both monetary and in shared town values. Last year, in an effort to quantize the effect passage would have on home values, I sought the opinion of Steve Elliott of Ashland, a certified appraiser with over forty years of experience and with intimate knowledge of our area. Mr. Elliott said that if the overlay district was implemented on an existing residentially zoned property, the resale value would certainly be significantly impacted. However, for a residence, including a non-conforming one, in an industrial zone, he would have to do extensive research for the simple reason that it is just not done. I repeat, just not done. Is Mr. Elliott correct? We thought it would be worth finding out. So, this year, following the maxim, "if you want something done, ask a busy person," since April sixth, when we found out this was going to be on the warrant again, we reached out to three hundred and thirty-one other Massachusetts municipalities with two questions. First, has your town or city created an adult entertainment overlay district? Second, if so, does it contain any single-family homes, performing use or not, within its boundaries? The executive summary, so this is something, of the one hundred and ninety-three responses to date is, thirty-nine have created an adult entertainment overlay district, none with existing uses where not solely or primarily industrial or commercial. Holliston has a proposal on this year's warrant, no residences within it. Two have the equivalent of an adult entertainment overlay district by special permit in part of a zoning district, no residences within them. Seventy-seven have bylaws that allow adult entertainment businesses by special permit within one or more types of zones, most commonly industrial or general business districts. Most provide setback provisions, provisions of up to fourteen hundred feet from other districts, existing residences, schools, churches, parks, et cetera. Seventy-four have no bylaws addressing adult entertainment uses at all. They run the gamut from small-town, rural towns, to former mill towns like Clinton, to prestigious suburban towns like Weston, Duxbury, Concord, Lexington, and Sudbury. From these, we receive comments from it just has not been a concern, to be carried as a shared risk, to the internet has caused most of that ship to sail. The conclusion from this survey is that Steve Elliott is correct, and that the Planning Board's proposal threads the needle of Section nine A's intent finer than any municipality has ever attempted. Our three homes are non-conforming uses, but how did they get to be so? When zoning was first enacted in the early seventies, the requirements dictated that more land must be zoned industrial. North Hopedale took a rescue. Despite having only residential uses, plus unattractive for industrial development due to being mostly wetland or ledge, with no town water or sewer, and bad perk rates, it was tacked onto the large wooded industrial zone acreage that extends from the pond and railroad tracks to behind three sixty-six and three sixty-eight West Street. Our parents, grandmother, and the Taylor family felt powerless to stop it. The effects were twofold. One, a tax bill increase on undeveloped acreage due to the dual rate structure, something they could ill afford. And two, being barred from benefiting from Hopedale's residential building boom, for which some of the land is suitable. Voting yes for this proposal adds insult to injury. A double whammy then implies that these homes are non-conforming uses to be corrected, not the legally grandfathered and historical residences uses they actually are. As a couple of the town planners we contacted commented, the root problem is the industrial zoning of your neighborhood. Maybe you should request a change. Since it now looks like, if defeated, this adult entertainment overlay district could become an annual event, on April twenty-second, the three homeowners and myself submitted a request to have our parcels rezoned to residential per Section five of Generalized Forty-A, which provides the right of property owners to make such a request if an upcoming zoning change affects their property. This request is active and is transiting through the process, as Mr. Keys said, dictated by Section five. And it may appear on a future town meeting warrant. The Planning Board has stated there are no alternatives. We beg to differ. As evidenced by our survey, other towns have found solutions that provide adequate setbacks in residential zones in uses, schools, daycares, churches, libraries, and parks, while satisfying the requirement that a location must be reasonably available to such a business. Some of the responses included lessons learned in creating an adult entertainment overlay district that was subsequently approved by the Attorney General, not necessarily an easy process from what we were told.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
May I limit you to an actual two minutes, please? Very well.
To quote from the denim response, "Don't create a district by which no site is really available. Make sure the district is decent size. Make sure it is being done to regulate the secondary effects, not the use." These comments are more evidence that the proposal for you threads the needle of Section nine A's intent, a lot finer than what other towns have done. The Draper Factory's own industrial, the Airport Light Industrial, generous setbacks could provide reasonable isolation for residential and public uses. Or Hopedale, like many other towns, could allow adult entertainment businesses by special permit with restrictions and setbacks within one or more types of zones, spreading the risk equally among those who are within or near those zones. Or, like the towns who actually chose to do, Hopedale could simply do nothing. Are any of these alternatives ideal? No, but none are nearly as bad or as unprecedented as placed in a handful of residents' homes. As I mentioned last year, the word scapegoat originates from an ancient Israeli tradition of once a year symbolically placing the entire community's sin on its goat and sending the goat out to the desert to die, those sins dying with it. The yes vote tonight creates very human scapegoats of these Hopedale homeowners, and not for a year, but forever. Even if no such establishment is ever built, the stigma is permanent, and if any of us should ever want to sell, it will make it difficult to sell them as the historical homes they are, rather than as knockdowns. This may be obvious, but you vote tonight, please remember that while you elect officials to run day-to-day affairs, explore issues, and make recommendations, the town's decisions are made by you. The town meeting attendees, you have come tonight to exercise that right and responsibility. We are not confrontational people by nature. We just want to pay our taxes, enjoy the same privileges as everyone else in Hopedale, and not have our isolation for the rest of town, using the rationale inconvenience, forlaying whatever is undesirable upon us. We do not think the Planning Board has any gender goal other than what they have stated. We think there is a seer in their endeavor. We just don't understand the logic.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Ten seconds.
Bottom line, we think there's a simple guideline for deciding how to vote. If you would be fine with having your home in an adult district with no setback provisions, literally your kitchen, living room, and bedrooms in it, then vote to approve it. However, if part of you is to say, "Whoa, glad my house is not there," then we urge you to vote no, thereby preserving equal protections to all citizens. Plus, a motion for a majority to pass over is an option. The arguments for a pass over are twofold. One is that to allow time for the residential rezoning request to go through. But second, importantly, there are inadequacies in the text of the proposed Section seventeen A addition to the zoning ordinances. It contains only two paragraphs, three-point-one authority and three-point-two purpose. There are no paragraphs to describe where the district is, or any reference to another part of the ordinances that might define the location. There is also no paragraph describing the special permit process required by Section nine A that defines how an adult entertainment business would apply for and obtain a permit in the district, looking at other towns enacted bylaws. in the district, looking at other towns enacted bylaws. One typically finds additional paragraphs for applicability, what businesses fit under the definition, specified the special permit process is required, requirements for that special permit, such as setbacks, density of adult entertainment businesses, and operation signage, the right to apply special provisions to mitigate secondary effects, and lapses of unused special permits.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. You've had fifteen minutes. We appreciate your passion on this, and we appreciate your eloquence.
Well, thank you, thank you for your attention.
Yes.
Given the fact that they're still open, I don't find the residential appeal, can I make a motion to pass over the article until that is considered?
Hold on one second, please.
If I, well, if I may.
Yeah, we actually have additional language that was eliminated from, inadvertently eliminated from this, and I'd like Mr. Keyes to actually reread the motion with all of the information.
Well, Mr. Moderator, I'm gonna have town council read that. Basically, the reason why we want to read this additional, because there was a question on what adult use is to the gentleman in the back, so we wanted to find that for you because we think it's important. The one comment that I wanted to make to answer your question is, we've not had a public hearing yet on that item of the rezoning to residential, so...
But I think that should be done before you put this in the conference. If I was a resident, I should have a right to appeal based on an upcoming, upcoming appeal that had a vote through for...
I understand that, sir, but as I stated earlier, whether, whether...
Make a motion to pass over the article.
Not yet. If I can just respond to you, sir? Whether the eighteen-plus acres are zoned light industrial, or if they're zoned residential, it doesn't matter. The overlay district can sit on either zone. So if they're successful through the process of rezoning that from light industrial to residential, and they'll go through the same process as anybody else, it doesn't impact, affect, or take away from this proposal.
In the opinion of the moderator, I believe what Mr. Keyes says, it's an irrelevant motion, given the legal parameters that he just described.
One more point, at the last town meeting, everybody in their vote against this, and to you the same, just like you.
If I could make a comment, first of all, I would say that the vote was not overwhelmingly, just to clarify. Okay, this does take a two-thirds majority, okay, and that's an important thing to clarify, and that's a rule in place for a reason, okay? But it was not overwhelmingly vote no. I will, I... It was, it was denied, yes.
One last question, Mr. Sandman.
Just like the people in the slide, it's all...
We can't hear you, you're gonna have to come down to the microphone again, sir.
The person, the gentleman here, brought up about table in the article...
To the microphone, please. We can't hear you.
Sorry, sir. The person over there spoke about table in the article, which I understand is the reason why. But if we put this off, we table it, do anything, between now and the next meeting, if an application is sent to the town for adult entertainment in any of the districts that are zoned to allow it, the town can't refuse it. This is a protection article for the town, to keep it away from the children, to keep it away from the schools, keep it away from the churches. I don't think there's anyone in this place that wants it. It's a protection to keep it in a district away from the center, away from children.
Thank you.
That's all I've got to say. It can happen between now and the next meeting we have.
Floor belongs to Mr. Keyes.
Don't do it tonight.
Floor belongs to you.
So before town council reads the definition of adult use, because I want to accommodate the gentleman in the back, just to further clarify your statement, sir, that it was denied by two votes, okay? I just want everyone to realize that before we, you know, just let's have our facts clear. This is, this is important, I'm...
One second, please. Let Mr. Keyes speak.
No, I, do you, do you want to ask your question prior to adult use being defined?
Come forward.
Good evening, everyone. From a select and my colleague, this article, as far as the, the planning board, the planning board has worked diligently on this for years, okay, to find a place that wouldn't impact the residents of Hopedale, okay? When we look at people out, and I'm looking at people that come to these meetings and voice their concerns, okay, everyone has a concern looking for, to protect their homes and their environment. I understand that, okay? But when you look at what happens with people who are on boards, they work very, very hard to try to not impact the residents of Hopedale, okay? The fellow before me, a distinguished friend, basically spoke from the heart, if we don't do something, somebody's gonna come in and do something. It's been done in the neighboring town, okay? Let's try to just pass it and do what we can do, and that's it, okay? That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Come forward, Mr. Keyes. Yield the floor, please.
My name is Melissa Markon Smith. I'm a resident of 366 West Street. I'm one of the residents that's directly affected by this proposal, and I don't, I don't doubt that the planning board spent a lot of time and energy and effort taking care of this and trying to come up with something that they thought would be reasonable. But I keep hearing about protecting the residents of Hopedale. Well, I'm a resident of Hopedale. I'm your sister, I'm your daughter, I'm your wife, I'm your granddaughter. The gentleman said, keeping, keeping this from children. He has no idea whether there are children in my home. And the planning board talked about, the only way this could happen is if somebody sells. Well, I have no control over whether or not my neighbors sell. If, if somebody goes into a nursing home and they need to sell their property in order to provide long-term care planning for their loved one, then, then they're gonna do what's best for their family, but then I'm put in a position that, within a stone's throw of my home, there could be an adult entertainment. Now, I understand that we cannot by law prohibit the, an establishment in the town. I, I get that, and I'm willing to assume the risk that that could happen without the overlay, but a small town like Hopedale, I would like to think is more like a family, and in a family, everybody has everybody's back, and everybody assumes the same risk. You don't ask one sibling to take care of the elderly parents while the other siblings trellah off to Disney World. In a, in a proper family, family takes care of each other, and all I'm asking is that we all assume the same risk.
Thank you very much. Attorney Goldberg, would you please take the floor?
Mr. Moderator, through you, I'm gonna read the definition of the overlay, the district delineation, and then definitions.
Thank you.
Into the record, and I can provide you with a copy afterward. Okay, so after the information printed in the warrant, we would add the following. Overlay definition, 3.3. The adult-use overlay district is an overlay district superimposed upon underlying districts within its boundaries. Uses permitted in the underlying district shall be subject to the restrictions set forth in the underlying districts. Provided, however, to the extent the provisions of this section conflict with any otherwise applicable regulations for the underlying district, the provisions of this section shall control. Section 3.4, District Delineation. The adult-use overlay district is defined as the area shown on the adult entertainment overlay district map that you have before you, that is hereby made a part of the official zoning map of the town of Hopedale. If the boundary of the district is in dispute, the rules on interpretation of district boundaries as set forth in these bylaws shall apply. Definitions. Section 3.5. As used in this section, the following words shall have the following meanings. Adult bookstore. An establishment having as a substantial or significant portion of its stock and trade books, magazines, and other matter which are distinguished by or characterized by their emphasis depicting, describing, or relating to sexual conduct or sexual excitement as defined in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 272, Section 31. Adult motion picture theater. An enclosed building used for presenting material distinguished by an emphasis on matter depicting, describing, or relating to sexual conduct or sexual excitement as defined in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 272, Section 31. Adult paraphernalia store. An establishment having as a substantial or significant portion on its stock and trade devices, objects, tools, or toys which are distinguished or characterized by their association with sexual activity, including sexual conduct or sexual excitement as defined in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 272, Section 31. Adult uses for purposes of this article. Adult uses shall include the following. Adult bookstore. Adult motion picture theater. Adult paraphernalia store. And establishments which display live nudity. Adult video store. An establishment having as a substantial or significant portion of its stock and trade videos, movies, or other film or digital media which is distinguished or characterized by their emphasis depicting, describing, or relating to sexual conduct or sexual excitement as defined in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 272, Section 31. Establishment which displays live nudity. Any establishment which provides live entertainment for its patrons which includes a display of nudity as that term is defined in Chapter 272, Section 31 of the Mass. General Laws. Section 3.6. Adult uses allowed within the adult-use overlay district. Subject to the provisions of this section, adult uses shall be allowed only in the adult-use overlay district. And B, all adult uses shall require site plan review pursuant to the provisions of Section 18 of these bylaws. Mr. Moderator, I can make one point, please.
Yes.
This version of the bylaw, including the definitions, is the exact same version that's been provided previously, and to the previous speaker who had raised the issue about definitions, it is very good to have language like this in the bylaw, it makes it really have the teeth that it needs. And, and I also wanted to mention something I forgot to say earlier about adult use, adult uses generally. If there was an attempt to prohibit adult uses throughout the town, period, then essentially the, the Supreme Judicial Court has said, "That's not allowable, that's unconstitutional" because it's, it's restrictions on the basis of speech. You have to allow some area in town where they're permitted in order for, for that to be enforceable, and it's, you know, we have worked with the planning board on this, and we do believe that the area that's been assigned as an overlay area is sufficient to withstand constitutional scrutiny.
That's asking us to make insurance policy for the whole town, and that's not fair.
If I may, Mr. Honore, just a couple of final thoughts.
Please, and then we'll be calling the motion.
Let me just be clear. This isn't something that I want to do. I don't like having to do this. I don't like having to negatively impact any residents of the town of Hopedale, okay? I'm one of those brothers, I'm one of those dads, I live in town, but it's my obligation, signing up for the planning board and being the chairman of the planning board, to protect and to create something that least impacts the majority. That's why this proposal is being revisited, that's why I'm as passionate about it as Mr. Lawson is passionate about his opposition to it. But I want, I want to be clear, I don't like the fact that I have to do this, but this is something that we all truly believe, in my board, beyond myself, that we have to do.
Thank you all for your forbearance in this very, very sensitive and important matter. We need to take a motion on the, or take a vote on the amended motion. I am suspending debate. The, to, I'd like to, Mr. Keyes, if you would make this motion to amend with the portions of adult use read into the record by town council to the previous Article 18.
So moved.
Do I have a second? This will be a simple majority vote, just to incorporate the revised motion. Any discussion on that? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're gonna take a vote, and it is going to be a secret ballot, and I'd like to remind you that only Hopedale residents are permitted to vote and cast a vote. There is one question, sir? On procedure?
Freedom Street, I'd like to make a motion to pass over to the article.
We've already taken a motion to, to take a vote on this.
I have a certain time, I'm supposed to acknowledge.
All right, we will entertain the motion to take, to pass over this question. Did I hear a second?
Seven.
Is there any discussion? Let me just confer with the legal counsel. So on this motion, those who wish to continue to have a vote on this article would vote yes, in the affirmative.
Would vote no.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Forget what I said. Those who wish to vote on this would vote no. Those who wish to suspend and pass over would vote yes. So, all those in favor of passing over and not considering this motion further, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The noes have it. Thank you very much for that motion, but we will continue with the vote. Mr. Dugan? Again, residents only, please. And these ballots have yes/no tears. You simply put your box, put your ballot in the proper box.
You'll have to line up, come down and get your ballot. It's a yes and it's a no. Take off what you want and put it in the box.
Appreciate it.
Otherwise, you're the...
Tom, Tom, say, just a reminder, if you want to adopt this, it's a yes, if you don't, it's a no.
Just as a reminder, if you wish to adopt this, the vote is yes, if not, the vote is for no.
This is, this is what it's all about.
Absolutely.
I'll give you, I'll give you the floor to adjourn, and you can make that comment.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking of the fourth floor.
I'm not doing it a hundred percent.
I'm not doing it 100 percent.
The tally in favor, 67. Total against, 31. The motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Article 19. You also have a handout on this one as well. That is the green handout, lime green. Mr. Keys?
Yes. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town of Hope Dale zoning bylaws by amending the use regulation schedule set forth in Section 11 to allow additional commercial and industrial uses in the light industrial district by deleting the strike-through text and inserting the underlined text as shown in the handout for Article 19.
Motion is seconded. Is there any discussion? This will also require a two-thirds vote of the town, and I would like to do that orally if possible. No further discussion? Please indicate your support by voting, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 20.
Mr. Moderator, I move pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 38-H, and Chapter 164, Section 1, and/or any other enabling authority to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a so-called "payment in lieu of taxes" pilot agreement with BWC Origination 19 LLC or its affiliates, successors, or assigns with respect to payments for some certain in lieu of real and personal property taxes owed to the town for a period of 20 years and on other such terms and conditions as said Board of Selectmen seem appropriate relative to a proposed privately owned and operated solar energy facility located, or to be located at 300 South Main Street, Hope Dale, Mass. 01747, with an option for extension determinus with the lease of said parcel, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute any necessary documents relating thereto and take other action as may be necessary to effectuate the vote taken hereunder.
Seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Steady, would you like to give us just a brief explanation?
Yes. What a payment in lieu of taxes is, I know there's sometimes misconception it's a tax break. What it is, is an agreement that allows for tax certainty on a particular project over a period of time for the town. In this case, a solar facility, rapidly, the solar panels, et cetera, rapidly depreciate in value in over a period of time. What this will do is will guarantee a payment annually to the town of Hope Dale for a 20-year period. Now, state can enact legislation that would change the way these particular type of projects get taxed. However, if it does, and it would be a negative effect to the town, this agreement would stay in effect so that the amount of taxes that we know we're going to collect over a 20-year period, we will. The way this particular agreement that the Board of Selectmen has entered in, or begun negotiation with, with Blue Wave Capital structured is that it begins at a certain level and each year has a 2% escalator in it over the course of the 20-year period. The total amount of taxes that will be collected, again, just on the structures, is about $360,000 or so over that period of time. There's also tax on the land that the town will still collect as well. So currently, I believe that piece of property is somewhere in the $10,000 or $11,000 dollar amount of taxes we collect currently. With this agreement and with the property taxes, will begin somewhere in the neighborhood of $24,000, and it'll accelerate up in year 20, where it'll be just $20,000 plus on the structures, plus whatever the land taxes are at that point. So you can see that, you know, the town, you know, there's a delta in there, if you want to call it that, the difference between what we're currently collecting and what the, you know, and what the taxes will be in the future is really the value of the pilot agreement.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 21.
Mr. Moderator, I move that move to amend the Hope Dale Town Code, Chapter 130, specifically Section 130-4, by changing certain dates relative to the annual town reports with underlined text to be inserted and strike-through text to be deleted as follows. All town officers, boards, and committees appointed by the town shall make their annual reports to the Selectmen on or before the first day of February versus September each year. The reports shall address the activities during the town's fiscal year from July 1 to June 30. The Selectmen shall cause these reports, together with such other information as they deem necessary, to be published in one volume as the annual town report and available for distribution to the voters of the town on or before May 31 of the same year as opposed to December 31. That's the red booklet that many of you may have picked up this evening as you came in. And basically what this does, it allows the period of time that the report is going to be made on to align more closely with the town's fiscal year than the calendar year. And that's what the date changes will affect.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? Please indicate in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 22.
Mr. Moderator, I move that move to amend the Hope Dale Town Code, Chapter 130, specifically Section 130-4, by changing certain dates relative to the annual town reports with underlined text to be inserted and strike-through text to be deleted as follows. All town officers, boards, and committees appointed by the town shall make their annual reports to the Selectmen on or before the first day of February versus September each year. The reports shall address the activities during the town's fiscal year from July 1 to June 30. The Selectmen shall cause these reports, together with such other information as they deem necessary, to be published in one volume as the annual town report and available for distribution to the voters of the town on or before May 31 of the same year as opposed to December 31. That's the red booklet that many of you may have picked up this evening as you came in. And basically what this does, it allows the period of time that the report is going to be made on to align more closely with the town's fiscal year than the calendar year. And that's what the date changes will affect.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? Please indicate in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 22. Mr. Giuliani. Mr. Howes, it looks like.
I move that the town raise and appropriate $50,000 for aquatic native and invasive weed control in Hope Dale Pond.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
That is not part of that at all. It is not under the jurisdiction of the Hope Dale Park Commission. I don't even know who oversees Spindable Pond, to tell you the truth.
Any further conversation? Any discussion? Yes.
from the rustic bridge down to the mill, correct? Okay. Dave Ghiyami, who has done a lot of research and has been in contact with the company that provided this quote to us, has much more information, is much more knowledgeable than myself, and he'll address that.
You have the floor.
Thank you, and I thank everyone's indulgence for this late hour. Just a couple more minutes and we'll be all out of here. I believe the question was, what area of the pond is to be treated? The last comprehensive of what they call a whole pond treatment occurred in 2007. There was a partial treatment that occurred in 2009 that was mainly due to the excessive rain. The type of invasive species which occurs and which plagues Hope Dale Pond, and has historically plagued Hope Dale Pond since about 1948, needs to be treated with a herbicide called Floridone. That involves three or four separate applications and needs to be done every three and four years. It's very effective, it's also quite expensive. It is the only known herbicide, and actually the only known method, that will be effective to this type of invasive species. We will do the whole pond or comprehensive treatment from the dam where Draper's is all the way up to the rustic bridge. That whole area will be included. I hope everyone had a chance to read the handouts that were available. Does anyone have any questions at all about what's required and what needs to be done? I think those of you who have enjoyed Hope Dale Pond over the years, whether it's boating or canoeing, fishing, kayaking, whatever it is, or simply walking in the parklands, you understand the historical and the aesthetic value of this valuable part of Hope Dale. We need to start tonight, and I realize that it's a tough budget, these are tough circumstances. Everyone, including the park commissioners and myself, recognize that. However, we must begin the process to restore and preserve and to reclaim our pond, not only for ourselves but for future generations to come. Please, if you have any questions about the treatment, what we plan to do, the timeframe, anything at all, any other questions? Yes?
Historically, when we've used this type of method with this type of herbicide, we've had very successful treatments in 1999, 2004, and again in 2007. However, this is something which will plague the pond for forever. And this species will eventually come back, and we'll have to treat it in three or four years. If you do it on a regular basis and not have the time interval which has expired now, if you do it on a regular systemic basis, the price will eventually come down and your treatment will become more successful. The park commission and myself, we've already approached the conservation commission, we've renewed the order of conditions. We put this item out to bid.
Do you want to amend the item for the cost? Okay.
We put the item out to bid. If there's approval tonight, we can begin the first treatment in June. We'd like to do three or four treatments that occur roughly in between two and three weeks apart, going from June to late August. If we miss this window, it's going to be at least another year. Right now, there are favorable conditions for treatment. We haven't had any type of snowpack, therefore the comment is really almost nonexistent, the water level is relatively low, and there's not too much, I don't believe there's any rain forecast in the foreseeable future. So right now, we have, as they say, ideal conditions for treatment. Next year, or in the future, if it's not done this year, I imagine there will be an increase in price, and the invasive species of weeds will even become more complicated to treat. Any other questions?
One other thing, we are going to try to work with the dam/sidewalk project so that when the water level gets lowered for that, we will apply the herbicides, which will be the best time for that to happen, because you'll have a better chemical-to-water ratio.
Question?
What was the cost that you had?
The cost would be back at $36,800. We put a placeholder in because we did not have this information at the time. We could amend that, if that would be your preference, to make it for the $36,800.
Is that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to amend it to $36,800.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion?
I don't know if I would go that close to the number, just in case there are variables that you can't control at the time. I know that's unnecessary, but if we start with that number...
Do you wish to amend or withdraw your motion? I'm sorry? Do you wish, do you wish to amend or withdraw your motion? I'm sorry? So at $36,800 is the number. That's the motion. So that would reduce this and have the effect of reducing any kind of buffer. And, but I'd be correct in saying that if we needed more money than that, we would have to go to town meeting again? Or would we, yeah. So if that's not, if that number's not sufficient, we may not get the job done until we called another special town meeting. I'm sorry? Reserve fund transfer. So, but I'm trying to get, do we have flexibility to, to pay for what this actual cost? All right, so the motion on the floor is to reduce this, is to modify this amendment from $50,000 to, again, the number? $36,800. We have a second. Another discussion, yes? Yes, it doesn't have to back to 50 or as other amendment. So, the motion on the floor then is to reduce that number from $50,000 to $36,800. If you are in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Well, the motion does not carry. So we're back to the original motion. Any further discussion? I will call the motion. For those in favor of the motion as written, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries not unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Article 23. That's you, Carla. Sorry? We're going to pass over this.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 23.
Very well. That's because it's been covered actually effectively in Article 9, was it? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Article 24 then. We have to take a vote to pass over? I'm sorry. Then the, the motion is to pass over Article 23. Second? All in favor? Opposed? Article passes unanimously. Article 24.
I move that the town approve an increase for the senior tax work program annual amount from $750 to $1,000 pursuant to provision of general law, Chapter 59, Section 5K, provided, however, that the program shall not exceed $25,000 in fiscal year 2017.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously.
Ladies and gentlemen, the evening is late, but I just want to say one word before I make a motion to dissolve, and that is, obviously, what we saw tonight, frequently it is said that the old New England town meeting is the purest form of democracy. Tonight, I think we had a magnificent exposition of that. There were deeply felt feelings here, but there was, there was openness to all sides. There was a good vigorous debate. I'm very, very proud of everyone here tonight, and so thank you very much for this wonderful exposition of democracy in action. And with that, I'd entertain a motion to dissolve. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Good night to everyone, thank you.